Good morning, it's nine thirty and I'd like to call the May twenty-third Athabasca County Council Meeting to order. First item of business on your agenda is the approval of the agenda. The items that must be held up for discussion. To begin with, or at least are as follows. Item four point one. Item four point two. Please add four point three, section twenty-four point one, C A O recruitment, and that's a one P M. Discussion. Item number seven point one. Item number nine point two. Eleven point one C. Oh, sorry, backing up ten point one. Regional C P O. I think that meets the emergent criteria just because of the timing of our discussion and the need to keep that moving. Eleven point one C. And then number twelve, twelve point one, twelve point two. Please add twelve point three, that's section twenty-three. Local public body conference confidences and twelve point four. Section twenty-three, local public body. Confidences. Are there any other items to add to the agenda, Counselor Chamsik, then Wallack?
Can I add eleven U, please?
Eleven U, eleven point one U?
Yes.
Council Walk?
Five point three.
Council Wallack has asked to add five point three. Any other items to add or delete? Councilmen's.
Eleven one K.
Eleven point one K. Microphone, please, Councilmen's. Counselor Tapatonic is on Zoom and. Welcome, I'll repeat these again, Council, just so you have them all at the end. Eleven one F, eleven point one F. Anyone else? I guess I should add Counselor Holland sends her regrets. Okay, going through the list again to summarize, item number two point one, obviously. Item number four, four point one, four point two, we're adding four point three, which is section twenty-four point one, C A O recruitment. Item number five point three, item number seven point one. Item number nine point two, item number ten point one. See, regional C P O. Eleven point one C, F, K. And you, you. Sorry, you said you, right? And then twelve point one, two, three, and four. Twelve point one and two, or as written, twelve point three and twelve point four are section twenty-three. Local public body conferences. Counselor Anderson?
Item seven point six should also not go with the consent agenda.
Oh, you're right, sorry, item seven point six.
And I'll move to approve the agendas.
Okay. So i- if there are no further additions or amendments, Counselor Anderson has moved the approval of the agenda as presented, all those in favor. Councilor Look.
I.
That is carried eight and zero. Oh. I was gonna add the minutes and I forgot. Okay. Item number four point one is, these are all timed issues and they're about an hour, so we'll move along to item five point three on page twenty-seven of your agenda. Counselor Wall, you added.
I'd like to move to table this till the last meeting in June. To table the. Tourism Economic Development. Till the end of June, to our last meeting in June.
Do you want to rescind the other policy at the same time? Like right now?
Sure. Okay. And rescind the other policy. So I don't know if that's to or.
Yeah, we can split it, but it's so Council Wallack has moved to rescind policy seven, five, five, eight, and to table the draft policy seven, five, seven, five to. A June meeting. The last meeting in June, did you? Discussion?
Mister Reeve, that'll be June twenty-ninth.
Okay. To the June twenty-ninth meeting.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing none. On the question of the adoption of the motion to rescind policy seven, five, five, eight, and to table draft policy seven, five, seven, five, to the June twenty-ninth County Council Meeting, all those in favor.
I.
And that motion is carried eight and zero. Seven point one Director Ternichan, do you have anything you'd like to add that's not in the? Admin report?
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Uh, C A O.
Mister Reeve, to the Chair, to all members of council. At long last, what council's been waiting for and what administration has promised. Is the financial report up to the end of April of twenty twenty-three. Be assured that each month you will now be receiving this information updated at the end of each of this previous months. The Director's done a great job in providing the details for council in terms of any of the changes or notes. In the financial. Position. Yeah, which I hope members of council will find beneficial. If there's any changes that council would like in how we're reporting this information, please advise us. I'll be pleased to improve it to make it even more informative or meaningful for council. Okay, thank you, Mister Reeve.
Council Chamsik.
Um, I was just wondering, has the County Library Board media or payments been moved to quarterly payments?
Yes, we've been giving them quarterly payments.
Wonderful, thank you, and I will move to accept.
Okay, Council Chamsik has moved to accept for information, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I assume you're ready for the question on the adoption of the motion. To accept the April operating capital statements for information, all those in favor.
I.
Motion is carried eight and zero. Seven point six necessarily has to follow four point one, so let's truck on ahead. To nine point two. Calendars on page eighty-five of your agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the calendars, other than we can add Portage College Convocation on the second of June? Beyond that. Uh, Council Anderson?
Thank you, I'd like to add a Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society meeting on June nineteenth, nine thirty in the morning.
Multiplex on June nineteenth at nine thirty A M, other items? July seems worryingly. Void of, of items here. Hey. Yeah, Councilmen's.
On June. We'll visit to. The Athabasca Watershed Council, I won't. That meeting. In there, I won't be able to make it. So if. The alternate.
That's Council Cromwell, you betcha. By the way, that's between you guys to sort out at the time, yeah.
Okay.
Um, Council Anderson?
Has a date for the tri. Joint Council meeting with the summer villages in the west, in the east.
No, I think my understanding is the admin team is still trying to work something out that suits their schedules. So I'm. I'm suspecting by now we're, we're headed for late June or early July when they're all at the lake, July. You've got time to work that out, Council.
Are we next to the tri council for the?
Yes, for the village and town version.
Should we talk about? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, September. Yeah. Does anybody have a preference, pick a county hall? Perhaps. City of Grassland. Grassland Hall, Tasha, sir.
I was gonna say Jess, Collington, they have a booster and internet. We've already. Done something in Grassland, I'd be more than willing to go to Collington as well.
What's? Um, so tentatively, Collington direction, Councilmen's. Yeah, either or, I guess, yeah, we have done some stuff in Grassland, so. It is, sure, we did. So that the basket, so the basket last year, so. Four of ours on the list at some point, they're adding on, yeah.
Rochester as well.
Perryville's nice, if you don't want internet. There's.
Add more. Beautiful Hall and Brain App.
Internet.
Grows a month, go great in. Yeah. So for this time, we're thinking Collington. Um, Ms. Blair, do you wanna, would you be willing to just? Look at some dates and. Float a few for the next meeting? Is that agreeable to everybody at the table to just leave that with, with the admin to kind of narrow it down a little bit?
Um, if I, if I may, Chair.
Yes.
Um, just, um, through you to Leah, the only evenings that aren't available in Collington are Wednesday due to cadets.
Cadets meets every other night?
Every Wednesday.
All that are not available.
Yeah, it would just, the only day of the week that the hall is not available is Wednesday. Like in the evening, because that cadets meet every Wednesday.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Councilmen's.
Uh, just to throw it down here, July thirteenth, that's when the canoe brigade happens downtown. Uh, boats will be landing on the riverfront and. If Ho goes rate, well, that'll be in a little bit of a spielable. Later on in the committee meetings, but just throw it down for July thirteenth.
July thirteenth canoe brigade arrival.
Arrival around four, four P M.
Because that's a real lot, okay? Hopefully. Hopefully. If there are no other items to add, Council Gerlick or anyone?
I'm the zones on the seventeenth. For some reason, I was thinking that.
Of July, there's a Pembina meeting in July, I can't remember, it's the twenty-fourth or the seventeen.
I'm in a meeting.
Seventeen.
July should be. July twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay, but on the twenty-fourth.
Have it written on the wrong day, too.
Council Cromwell, you had your hand up.
Ready to make a motion to move as presented.
As amended? There's nothing else to add, Council Cromwell has moved, we accept the calendar as amended, all those in favor?
I.
Carried eight and zero. In cross out off your list. The next item of business is ten point one, the addition. Um, this is a follow-up to the. The discussion that occurred between the village and the town councils with our council. Uh, so to formalize direction for administration so that they can, can move on, is there anyone willing? To make a motion to the effect that would direct administration to work with the town and village. On possible structures for a single C P O force in the region. Councilmen's. Okay, is this, Councilman's has moved that we provided men the direction to work with the town and village on a possible structure for. See, a single C P O force in the region, is there any discussion? Council Cromwell.
Would that be a regional program or a program run by Athabasca County contracted out to our partners? I believe we have some discussion about that, and I can pull up the notes here, but there were. Well, there are members as opposed to doing a collaborative approach is more. In line with, we retain the service and contracted out no differently than we currently do with the Village of Boyle. And I, it was my understanding that was the consensus prior to moving into the. Tri Council meeting.
So there's no minutes from those meetings, of course, as you're well aware, but the, the motion is open to give the administrative team the flexibility to look at alternatives and come back to us. Understanding the discussion that went around with it. But it's, it's fairly unrestricted.
Okay, then. In that, can we ensure through administration that? There's also information on the county retaining that program completely and what it would be to contract. Time to our partners. And I can make that as a formal amendment if required.
I think they, I think it's, it's just to give them the direction to explore the alternatives. As they exist, so I don't, I wouldn't think it's required to narrow it like that, but you're welcome to do what you need to do. Other discussion, Council Gerlick? Anderson? Nope. On the question of the adoption of the motion to a direct administration to work with the town and village on possible structures for a single C P O force in the region, all those in favor? That is carried eight and zero. Sorry, I didn't see that, that is seven and one. Thank you for correcting the count, the motion is adopted. Please make sure the minutes reflect, there was a split per the. Procedural bylaw. Um, eleven point reports of committees, eleven point one C. I had just had a question that relates to that, but I don't know, Counselor, did you want to make any verbal report on that, or is there a written one adequate in your mind?
Well, it is a. Pretty hefty report there to give you a lot of information. But. Some of the things that we've been working on that are going to be region-specific and more information is yet to follow. Um, you know, when you talk about. The mission statement of A C C P A, which is also mandated by the provincial government. As required for funding to hold that yearly conference. Uh, but the mission be bringing agencies and citizens together to build a safer. Communities and promote well-being for all. A little bit of information for you guys. Uh, with, working with Staff Sergeant Hall and Sergeant Proposee, as well as some of the summer villages and officers from K Division. We are currently working on. With the, the help from volunteer boards, getting some rural crime watch chapters started here in Athabasca County for summer villages. The Boyle Region and the Athabasca Region. Uh, additionally, we're going to have some information coming out very soon on a platform called Rave. Uh, which is done via the R C M P. That will be crime updates and information that is given out to all residents that sign up for it. Which is going to be an incredible. Uh, tool for that rural crime to build a safer community. And also speaking to one of the contacts in the federal government Public Safety Division. Uh, she has given me some information on grants that we would be eligible to get as a municipality for rural crime or public safety initiatives that work with our partners out in. Example Buffalo Lake. Uh, for the well-being of both our communities, so there's gonna be more information coming on that. And. The Zoom meeting I had this morning prior to coming in. Uh, speaking with the Sussex UK Police Commissioner and members of our board there. She'll be giving information over to me on something called the DISC platform. Which is a inter-agency communication system. Which would be. Prevalent and incredible for. For the provincial government to look at for the communication breakdown between R C M P Sheriff. Fishing game, C P Os and everybody else involved, which could greatly reduce. Uh, the amount of time missed or communication opportunities missed between inter-agencies when working on. Any type of police matter. That's kind of the little update I have on top of what you have in your package.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to eleven point one F, Councilmen's.
I guess the. What I just wanted to say is that last, last Tuesday, there was a. A meeting with the summer village of Island Lake. And some of the summer villages. Out west regarding the water. Uh. Water study they're gonna be doing, they got the grant for, for trying to get the water line out. Uh, so there was just a real quick meeting and, and what came out of that is they're, they're gonna generate a steering committee. And. All the municipalities, like all the summer villages and Athabasca County and. I don't know if the town's gonna be involved, but, but probably the water commission is gonna be involved. There's gonna be a letter sent out regarding the steering committee and that, so that's kind of like a quick update on that, that, that's what come under there. Uh, they got the grant for seventy. Seventy some thousand dollars, they had to put in seventeen thousand. Ended up getting government forwarded fifty grand, so it's, it's, uh, so it's a start, it's a start to. Uh, and, and letters will be sent out regarding the steering committee, so.
So there'll be more coming, will.
Yeah, you betcha.
Okay, eleven point one K, you're on deck again.
Seven point one.
Watershed Council.
Uh, the Watershed Council, there is a, a meeting on, on June seventeenth, that's Saturday in Lakewoodish. And it's gonna be the, it's an A G M meeting and not. Uh, and then, uh, just a, a brief update regarding the canoe brigade. Uh, on a mini committee near committee there regarding the landing in Athabasca. Myself, Ida Edwards and Petra with the Watershed Council is on that and. Coming up with ideas, I think to reach out to. To the Rotary Club for, for. Uh, having a meal, they're gonna land around four o'clock in the afternoon, there'll be entertainment from about there, they're thinking about two. Till possibly about eight or nine, if people want to hang around, a meal down there, they get. Welcome to come, come on to the land, that'll be from the mayor, I think. And that, so it's, it's just a. It's gonna be a, a bit of a spectacle, there's fourteen, fourteen canoes already and. Uh, in the canoes will be our counterpart here. Council Chamsik is, is graciously stepped up to the plate, I'm not, but. But. I think she's gonna climb into Fortis Center Boyne, there's a huge, uh. Oh, get together in Fortis Center Boyne on the weekend. And that's their two-hundredth anniversary, so. And I, and, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that's free. And if anybody wants to go there and they're, they're gonna have games and, and all this other stuff and going on there, so. So yeah, that's something to keep in mind for this, uh. Where the canoe brigade on the thirteenth of July. And. Council Chamsik wants to chime in here.
And. For this, so for this in a going thing, there is a registration process as well for guests and stuff to come in as it is a big celebration.
Yep. And I think Council Chamsik might be looking for a flag, a county flag to possibly.
We were. Discussing then, uh.
We, we had a whole bunch that we gave to Boyle, maybe.
We were kind of discussing in one of the meetings of, um, you know, between the Watershed Council, town and county. Of, uh, bringing the flag from point A to the end and, you know, having kind of like a, a journey flag, there's a. It is quite the features, well, and. It's always a positive thing.
I think, are there not more? We gave them all away.
Um, I believe we looked into ordering flags with a previous C A O and it was decided not to order any, and we do not have any.
Any.
Within this building, so if. One is wanted, um. Administration would have to look at ordering some.
Take one off, one of the pools.
Well, and I don't think it needs to be a full-fledged size flag as well.
We have time to sort that out, but that might be a. An R F D to have for the next council meeting.
Sure.
If, because we're, I mean, almost certainly. There's need in the county for, for flags over time, I mean, we fly them. You know, in Boyle, we fly them at our own public buildings, and if our inventory is at zero, it should just be something that we keep stocked up. Like, I don't even know if we should have a motion or if they should just do it. Council Cromwell?
I'm. Through the Chair to the C A O, would an R F D be required, or? Can you with your authority purchase a few flags that? We can have on standby for such a need?
Mister Reeve, through the Chair to you, Council Cromwell, and all members of council, I think it's under the C A O's purview to proceed without a R F D.
Perfect.
Having heard council's wishes. I'll ask my communications coordinator get on it and. We'll have the people working in the basement with the. Ink machines printing them up tonight.
Well, and, and you know, as you know, I drive around the county, I think it's important to me that we make sure that all of our buildings have good quality flags. Um, you know, we should never have ripped national or provincial flags on our fire halls, county buildings, any of that, and, um. And I know we have in the past, sometimes that's slipped a little bit, so. Other comments, Councilmen's, you, you were partway through, I don't know if you were quite at the end of your.
No, I think, I think that's, uh, that's about all I have, it's just, I just wanted to give just a brief update on, on what's kind of happening with the canoe brigade coming in, so. If you can take in, uh. On July thirteenth, I think it'd be, it's gonna be a pretty good spectacle, I think, for. Them coming in, so.
Okay. Hang on. Uh, the next item is eleven point one U, Council Chamsik.
I'm just thought I would, uh, spread the word out there and, you know, looking at the mentorship program for F C S S. The need of having those volunteers, you know, it's a requirement of about an hour a week, spending time with children, you know, making that positive impact, and of course, they're always looking for volunteers. Uh, with that grade three, four level. Um, and also, um, just looking at a lot of their programs and, you know. Everything from, you know, young, basically newborn children up to sixteen years of age and. Uh, promoting those programs. As much as possible, teaching coping in life skills and everything in between to music.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the reports from committees for information, Councilmen's? Has moved. Uh, any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, on the motion to accept the reports from committees for information, all those in favor?
I.
That's carried eight and zero. And it is, oh, we haven't even. We're moving right along, we're not even gonna need to coffee break this morning. Uh, so it would be in order to receive a motion to enter closed session to address items twelve, two, three, and four. Hands please, Counselor Cromwell has moved, we enter closed session, all those in favor?
I.
Eight and zero, and the motion is carried. So we'll do introductions while we, um, get the technical piece going. Again, welcome, uh, my apologies for the delay, that's my responsibility, I. I wasn't watching the clock as close as I should have. Um, in the room with us today, we have the recording secretary, Ms. Blair. Jordan, whose last name eludes me and, uh. He's the county, he's the communications coordinator for the county. Uh, you've met our C A O, Pat Vincent, and then Deputy Reeve, I'll let you go and we'll.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson, I live in the far east of the county.
Uh, good morning, Joe Gerlock, uh, Representative Division One in the south area, Rochester, Barrio area. Brian Hall, I live just north of Joe and, uh, in the Perryville region.
Good morning, welcome, Gary Cromwell, far north, wandering River, Brain App, Lujade area. The island of Wandering River.
Kelly Chamsik, Prosperity Grassland, that more in Don Bell areas.
Morning, Camille Wallack, Division Nine, North of the River.
Morning, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Agonlic area.
And on joining us via Zoom, we have Counselor Capitonic, and she's in Collington right now. And absent is Counselor Holland, who lives to the east of town. And the floor is yours, thank you.
Well, thank you, Reeve and Council, and, uh, yeah, my name's Brian Panasek, I'm with Norton Lakes College and. I work specifically with dual credit and recruitment is, is my area, and I know, uh, Counselor Cromwell through the, uh. Uh, Community Education Committee requested a presentation on dual credit, now, I wasn't exactly sure what, uh, was wanted, so. I have a really quick presentation and then I'll throw it open to some questions that you may have specifically. So maybe just go to the next. So maybe just go to the next slide there. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, uh, but basically just what is dual credit? And I'm not sure if everybody knows, but dual credit is available for high school students and it is an opportunity for high school students to take. College courses while they're still in high school. And while they take the college course, they get. Credit at the college, but also high school credits and hence the name dual credit. You get. Credit from both institutions. And uh, you know, there is a ton of good reasons why you would want to take dual credit. I'm a dual credit convert. And say, I have seen so many great success stories where. Kids get an opportunity to explore a career that they might be interested in. They can uh, see if they like it. It saves them time. Uh, after high school, to find out if they like what they're doing or not like that particular program. In some cases, uh, we've seen some of our students actually graduate uh, college. Just before and walk across the college stage before they graduate high school. So there's so many uh, great win-wins. Uh, you know, if you can come out with a credential, you can get a job, get you started. We've had students that, you know, get started in one career and decide to go on, like they might take. Healthcare aid and then decide they want to be, go into be a nurse or they might take uh. You know, fourth class power engineering, move on to third class or go into educational assistant and go, yeah, I really like this. And this is something I could work with and then want to get into and be a teacher. Um, so there's all kinds of great things that you can do in dual credit. Uh, just to really quickly give you some of the ideas, uh, some of the programs and courses that we have available at Northern Lakes College. And, and I'm saying programs and courses because sometimes there's programs, you can take the entire program, but oftentimes it's just uh. Some courses in that program. For example, practical nurse, you can take some programs in that. Some uh, courses that would go into your primary care paramedic. Healthcare aid, same thing, or you can actually take the whole program. You can get courses in social work and addictions counseling, but you can actually take your entire. Educational assistant and early learning and childcare program if you want it to. Uh, we have trades programs in carpentry welding, electrical, uh, millwright and heavy equipment technician. You can uh, take some courses in introduction to surveying and power engineering, fourth class as, as dual credit. You can take office admin, business admin, computer network specialists and all of those pro, you can take the entire program if you were so inclined. And we have a whole bunch of university transfer courses that students can take and transfer if they plan to go to university and, and transfer those. So, again, it's very easy for people to get started in dual credit. If you're a high school student here in uh. Athabasca, you just go and see your counselor. We have an agreement signed, uh, the college and Aspen View School Division, so they can talk to their counselor. They sign up for a course and they can get going. So it's a. To me, it's a really, really great deal for high school students. So that was a really quick rundown through it and I'm just gonna open that up for, for any questions.
Counselor Chamsik and Counselor Cromwell.
Uh, as a mom with up and coming kids uh. Entering uh, out of high school and so on and so forth. I really appreciate seeing even on social media for things like you have everything from like firearm safety courses to H2S alive. And it's just really great to see that. But I also seen that uh. You guys ran a program for, I think, junior high children at one point for a welding program, uh, like an intro into that as well. And I think that that's just excellent work. And now that you answered, what are my questions partnering with um, Aspen Few School District? Do you also partner with uh, Northern Lake School Division and? As well?
Uh, no, we don't have an agreement with Northern Lake School Division. Uh, well, we haven't, yeah.
Okay.
And it's up to the school divisions if they want to partner. School divisions uh, can partner with uh, post secondaries from around the. Province and, and do dual credit. One of the nice things about uh, Northern Lakes College is we do a lot of our delivery by distance. So many of the programs, except for the trades, they can take uh, by distance, so they can take just about anywhere. And so, yeah.
Well, thank you for that. And I wasn't sure how this process goes and with, you know, the age of technology, it's always a wonderful thing to have. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Cromwell. So I'll say thank you very much for your presentation and appreciate you coming in here today and, and sharing that with the group. So I, I had the, the, the pleasure last year of attending the convocation in Slave Lake and it was really amazing to watch the um. The grads because they weren't all. Just out of high school. There was this, this age of the high school grads and the people who were clearly more mature and that um. I thought was pretty, pretty special. One of the people that I, I saw at the convocation was also somebody who uh, had graduated high school here a week or two before. And then the next week I was in the accounting office and there she was already deploying her Northern Lakes skills and certificate with, with her, you know. Hopefully a well-paying job. I don't know what, what they're like, but I mean, she was right away had that skill and it wasn't just. The grocery store for the summer or something like that. So I, the, the two questions I had really were, what did the schools do to promote your dual credit program? Internally, like, do, do they take an active role in promoting it or is it just something the students have to stumble upon?
Uh, you'd have to talk to the school divisions on that. We have some school divisions that are very active. And some school divisions that are not as active in promoting the, the programs.
So on, on, do you have any idea how many Bassview students right now are you making use of this opportunity?
Yeah, we've had uh, six in the past year.
And, and it's eligible to grade ten, eleven, twelve?
Yes. Based, oh, it is available depending on what courses, but most of them start in grade eleven. We get very few starting in grade ten. The grade ten curriculum, they're very already got a full course load with high school. And they need to have grade ten prerequisites of English and math usually. So they could start it in second semester, but usually they're so busy, they start it in grade eleven and twelve.
Okay. And then, um, do you end up, like, in terms of lab space? Do you uh, make use of Aspen U facilities when the? For the welding labs and the other, other trades related things? Or where do they, where do they go to learn those skills?
Uh, we've been using uh, our own facilities. So the, I mean, we have labs for. Shop space in Slave Lake would be the closest and then High Prairie and High Level.
Okay, yeah. Other questions from council, Councilor Gerlick, then CAO, and then uh, Councilmen's.
So for students taking the trades, they would have to be on site. And what do they do for their, do they, are they on site for the college training and take their high, high school courses by sort of distance? Or, or how do they?
Trades is one of those where they have to come full-time. Uh, it's a full-time program and face-to-face. So they, usually it's a semester off when they take uh, the trade. So. Yeah, and they'd have to be on site. So from, for Athabasca, it's not ideal. Because the student would have to relocate. And we have had students relocate to another, you know, a community to take the trade if they were very, very interested. Um, but it's usually the students that are in that community that take advantage of it more for the trades.
Yeah, otherwise it would be sort of a distance learning for the other. The, the other.
The other programs, yeah. The trades is, is a little different. They expect them there face-to-face.
Yeah, good, thank you. Uh, CAO, then Councilmen's.
Mister Reeve, uh, through the chair. I uh, very proud to have served two terms on the Board of Governors for Northern Lakes College. And very proud of the reputation that Northern Lakes College has in distance learning. My wife is a graduate of the social work program and went on to Athabasca University. And University of uh, Victoria to get her bachelor's in social work. So. One huge success story from my personal perspective. Uh, the other thing is the reputation of Northern Lakes College. Reached all the way to Thailand. And the youngest princess in rural family made a trip to Slave Lake, Alberta in nineteen ninety-six. So she could see how the licensed practical nurse program was being delivered here. And she used that model in Thailand to educate uh. Students in the northern regions of Chang Mai and Chang Rai. And that was a huge success. So very, very proud of uh, my association and those uh, wonderful uh, success stories. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I did not know about that. So that's good to know. Yeah, wonderful.
You were still in high school?
Yeah.
This sounds like a, like a great program, um. Back, uh, I don't know, twenty years ago or, or, or so there was a program through, through the school. It was a rap program. And uh. This sounds kind of like it, but the only thing is. So you guys aren't using any, any businesses, any industry as, as training centers or, or just, just your own classroom stuff?
Well, um. If you're speaking specifically of trades, uh, when you talk about the rap program, there's, there's two things. That you need as a tradesperson to get certified or to get your first period is number one. Is you have to have work experience. You have to have. I believe it's a thousand hours. And number two, you have to have the theory component. The rap program gives you the experience component. The dual credit pros, program gives you the theory component. So if you take rap and dual credit trades. You now ha, you can graduate as a first period. Uh, of that trade. So you would be fully certified. You got the hours and you got the theory. So. They're same, they're very similar, but uh. A little bit different in, in what we offer. We don't offer the, the uh. The hours of training.
Of training, yeah.
Yeah. When you talk about, uh, we do use a lot of the businesses. In the communities that we're in for some of the other programs. For example, you know, educational assistant. If a student's taking educational assistant from Aspen View. They would often uh, go to. Another classroom and maybe the same school or to the elementary school and work as an educational assistant there. Uh, when they're doing their practicums and stuff. Same thing with power engineering. You have to, uh, you have to get some steam time and we work with uh, careers next generation. Where they can go out and get some. Internships, uh, get that steam time and get paid for it. And, and then they would do the theory with us and very much like a trade where you get certified once you have your experience and you have your theory.
Yeah, and it sounds like on, on this, uh, on the uh, power engineering and that, it sounds like it's kind of virtually a rap program where. Cause they're getting paid and they're, and they're getting their time in on the, on the practical end.
Absolutely.
Plus doing their theory.
Yep.
So, right on.
The big difference with uh, power engineering is you can do the theory by distance.
Right.
Whereas the theory for the trades, they want you to attend the class. Yeah.
Yeah, you betcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great program.
Other questions? You know, I, I think certainly the ability to educate people in their homes and their, their communities is, is a big deal in Northern Alberta and. Something we do, we, you know, we should be celebrating and I appreciate you sharing this with us today.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh, tell all your, your kids and grandkids, it's coming up. It's a great, great opportunity for people and uh. It's still not as well-known as I think it should be out there. Um, people still don't know about it as much as they should, but it is a great opportunity and. You know, Aspen View is, is on board, so they can, you know, if your kids are in the school division, they have access to it. Have them talk to their high school counselor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you. Council, we will take a recess of until five minutes passed. And then we have the, an eleven o'clock uh. Delegation, which uh, before we do that, it would be in order to entertain a motion to enter closed session from Council Wallack. All those in favor? That is carried eight and zero, I see you count. We are at uh, we've got a one PM coming up. We've got uh, seven point six is the next item on the agenda. It would be probably appropriate to take a motion to accept for information. This is the Northern Lakes presentation. Counselor Cromwell has moved. We accept the presentation. For information, is there any discussion on the Northern Lakes, Northern Lake, Lakes, Lakes presentation? Done. All those in favor of accepting for information? That's eight and zero and the motion's carried. Shall we? We have two motions coming out of the uh, prior closed session, so let's address those. Uh, as it relates to item number twelve point. Actually, we can have a number twelve point one. Um, I think the motion that makes sense related to that is just to accept for information unless. Anybody wants to go back, like, to discuss it further enclosed. So uh, as it relates to item twelve point one, Councilman's has moved. We accept the presentation for information. All those in favor? It's carried eight and zero. As it relates to twelve point two, uh, Counselor Anderson had a motion.
To direct administration to work with our regional partners on a project as discussed with the county's contribution being up to ten thousand dollars.
Counselor Anderson has direct, made a motion to direct him in to work with our regional partners on a project as discussed in an amount up to ten thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, all those in favor?
I.
Okay, that is eight and zero. There's no one opposed. And regarding item twelve point three, Counselor Wallack.
I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to uh, work with the town of Athabasca on the health, housing for healthcare. And to explore options with a matching up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
And report back to council.
And report back to council.
Um, so Counselor Wallack has moved that we council directs administration to work with the town to explore um, housing for healthcare and professionals. Healthcare professionals with a budget of up to two hundred and fifty thousand and report back to council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
And opposed. So the count is six and two and the motion is adopted. Hey. I feel like we're lost. We still have twelve point four to do, but we also have uh, to go back to closed for. Uh, four point three, so probably the answer is we'll go to twelve point four enclosed. Recession during the closed session to have lunch and then uh, reconvened one and. It should be that. One o'clock was item four point three, section twenty-four one, CAO recruitment.
And then following council meeting, there'll be municipal planning commission meeting.
And. I would think, um, I mean, I guess this is a good place to ask counsel. Would anyone object to a short lunch? And during the recess. Overlap and start a bit of a municipal planning commission meeting, tackle a couple of things and then. Cause otherwise we're gonna have an, an hour for lunch, an hour and a half, hour and twenty minutes. Which is an hour longer than I. But, I mean, do you want longer lunch breaks? Like, for me, shorter, because I.
I don't think we need to have an hour long lunch break, but uh, like a half an hour, just like a normal.
I'm saying during the, during the recess of council meeting, we could convene an MPC meeting, tackle the first. Two items. Recession that. They're not live stream, no. Okay. Uh, motion to enter closed. Councilman's has moved. We go back into closed session. All those in favor?
I.
That is carried eight and zero. Okay, um, so we've left closed session regarding item four point three. Is someone willing to move? We accept the presentation for information. Counselor Cromwell has moved. We accept. Presentation received under section or under item number four point three for information. All, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried seven and zero. The motion is adopted. The last item of business on our agenda is there's a motion that relates to item twelve point four. Miss Counselor Gerler. Miss Counselor Gerlick. You had told me at the break, you wanted to make a motion to receive. The C O's report and recommendation for information, and that no formal sanctions take place.
Yes.
So moved by Counselor Gerlick, is there any further discussion? If not, Counselor Anderson.
Can I make amendment?
It's possible.
That no further sanctions against Counselor Cromwell regarding the breach will be.
So the amendment is to add. After the word sanctions, Counselor Cromwell. Take place, further discussion? In terms of the amendment, then, all those in favor of the amendment to add the words against Counselor Cromwell? In favor? Get opposed? So the count is four and three, the motion is adopted, the original motion as amended by Counselor Gerlick. To receive the C O's report and recommendation for information, and then no formal sanctions against Counselor Cromwell take place, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried six and one, the motion is adopted. It is time for motion to adjourn, cause there's no further business, Council Wallack, Council Gerlick, he almost beat her. We're adjourned.